All right.
Okay, good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, January 18th, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:02. Please note that in accordance with Government Code Section 54953, subsection E, subsection 3, this meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because we are videoconferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when Commissioner staff, presenters and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comments for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considered videoconferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior when on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Right. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
President.
Vice President Vaughn.
President.
Commissioner Kearney. Commissioner Sherlock. Commissioner Spring.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
And we have six commissioners present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants and staff roll call. County Santa Clara Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray. I think Mo is there. No, I guess he's not. Okay. Acting Fire Chief Glass.
Here. Good evening.
Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
Operations Manager Burnett.
Present.
Drone Manager Logan.
Here.
Lead Deputy County Council Chelliden.
Present.
Assistant County Counsel Mitra.
Present.
Thank you. Search Program Analyst Bibi. Special Vince in Community Education and Outreach Independent Contractor Constantine.
Here.
Friar and Loretta Consulting Engineer Tarantino.
Here.
And Fire Safety Council Managing Director Rendler. January, I see you. I didn't hear it here, though. Thank you. So presenters, consultants and staff are all accounted for.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to item two, which is the president's remarks. So Happy New Year, everyone. It's been two months since we last met back in November. So the staff carried on through November into December. And here we are actually in mid-January. Actually, almost is a later meeting, so almost on the last third of January. So Happy New Year, everyone. You know, so this kind of marks the beginning of a new year, but it's also halfway through our fiscal year. So, you know, there's a lot of things on the budget tonight or on the agenda tonight around the budget and planning for the next fiscal year and all the other activities coming up. So a lot of good work's been done by the staff. You know, preparing us well through the holidays to get us to this point. So with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We'll now move to item three, public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subjects not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker, unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
We have a comment from Alan.
All right, Alan, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. I have three comments. The first comment is a question. Commissioner Kearney's term has expired. What are the plans to fill that position? Second, I'd like to mention that the chipping crew came by my house today and chipped up all the things that I had left out there. But the procedure seems to have changed because my understanding was is that multiple bidders would come by and inspect the piles and then a bid would be prepared and then the little bidder would be inspected. That wasn't the case. Five guys, two trucks and a woman and a car showed up and seven minutes later it was gone. And my third comment is about the agenda packet. I'd like to point out that it appears this district has adopted the practice of putting out the agenda the last possible minute it could. And then kind of filling in the staff reports and attachments anytime up until the meeting. While this may meet the letter of the Brown Act, it certainly doesn't meet the spirit. And it doesn't constitute transparency and it's unfair to both the public and more importantly, it's unfair to the commissioners and will adversely adversely impact their ability to make informed and good decisions. Barring emergencies, if the staff reports cannot go out with the agenda, I suggest that the item should be held to the following meeting. And I recommend that the commission instruct the staff with some direction about the requirements pertaining to staff reports and package relative to the agenda. Today's agenda has 28 attachments, of which roughly half came out on the day the agenda was published. 25% came out on the 17th. 21% came out today, some late, late in the day, and a couple of items still have no reports. I've, I try to read everything before the meetings and I will just tell you, I'm not prepared for this meeting and I can't see how any commissioner can be fully prepared for this meeting. I look forward to your action on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Any additional public comments? Seeing that. Alan, to your first item about Commissioner Kearney's position that resides with Supervisor Semidian's office and we await to understand what Supervisor Semidian's office is going to do with that.
So. President Warren, yes, your permission, I'm not going to be continuing on with the commission next year, so I'm going to be standing down.
All right. Thank you, Terry.
You bet.
So I, so how that role is going to be filled is with Supervisor Semidian's office. And then to the question about the chipping program, well, let's address that in the fuel reduction portion of the update when we get to that portion of the agenda. And then Jay, now please note the comments regarding the the reports in the agenda.
Yes, so noted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comment? All right. Thank you. We will now move to item four, which is the consent calendar and changes to the order of the agenda. All right. Are there any comments from the staff on these items, which is the, all the items associated with the consent calendar item four? Jay, can you provide additional clarification on four J and four G?
Yes, thank you. Happy to do so. And four J is a very important item. And that is that I entered into on behalf of the district, a cost sharing agreement with the county of Santa Clara for their imagery in LiDAR data acquisition. And that's for a one-year term from December to December of '21 to '22 for a cost not to exceed $9,654, which was in the General Managers Authority. And that agreement was reviewed and approved by County Council as to form and legality. And what that does is it will provide us some very high technology data that is for imagering and for a GIS system. So basically, it's a partner sharing with other agencies in the county and then leveraging the expertise from the county for that kind of data information that will be part of our GIS system. So it gives us a a very good advantage for all of our mapping and the various kinds of integrated hazardous fuel reduction projects we'll be doing. And I, I know the staff is very happy to have that most recent technology. That's the end of my comments there. And then on four G, I just want to mention, which I'm sure we're all aware, the impact again of the reemergence of the COVID virus in the form of the Omicron. And we've been sending out, as we've been receiving them from the county health department, flyers and information to inform the public, inform the staff and certainly to inform the commissions. And I hope that you will augment that information to your constituencies and your residents or friends and neighbors that you know. Because this is again, a very, a very grim time of COVID within our community. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right. Are there any questions from the commission on the items or would any commissioner like to make changes to the consent calendar or the order of the agenda? I'm not seeing any. All right. With that said, I will now entertain a motion. Will Commissioner adopt the consent calendar? Will the commissioner making the motion, the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording.
Kavita Tonka, so moved.
Thank you, Kavita.
10 seconds.
Thank you, George. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion on items? And the consent calendar for number four from the commissioners? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? It's now open for public comment. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you very much. Seeing that there's no further discussion, we'll now vote to adopt the consent items. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren.
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes, says except to, except to four B abstain.
And Commissioner Spring.
Roger.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Okay. And the motion passes six to zero. We have one absent. And Commissioner Kearney abstains on item four B.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move to item five, public hearing on the proposed abatement of hazardous weeds, brush and rubbish. Before us is item five A. This is the public hearing. Mo Kumray, Weed Abatement Manager for the County of Santa Clara is with us today, supposed to be. I don't see. Oh, there he is. He's on. Great. Thank you. Is on us, is with us tonight. Mr. Kumray, please provide a brief overview of item five, which is the weed abatement process and reports. Mo, over to you.
Can you hear me now?
You're barely.
Can you hear me better?
A little bit.
How's this?
Okay, we can proceed.
Okay. So this is the second step in a third step process. Weeds, brush and rubbish have already been declared a public nuisance. And this step is the opportunity for property owners to contest inclusion in the program. Following this, any properties that remain in the program after this hearing will be inspected after April 30th. They need to maintain the property from April 30th to the end of October. And any charges that need to be assessed will be sent to a third, to the third step, which will be the assessment hearing, which will take place in July, August timeframe. With that, I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So any commission questions at this point? Okay, not seeing any. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kumray. I will now open the public hearing. The time is 7:16 PM. Please note that if any members of the public would like to contest the inclusion of their name or personal in Exhibit A of Resolution Number 22-03 of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to proceed with weed abatement, we, abatement of weeds, brush and/or rubbish. Now is the time to do so. Any and all persons interested having any objection to said list or to any matter containing therein may appear and be heard. Are there any comments from the public? All right, Alan. Please proceed.
Mr. Kumray, I have a couple of questions. One is, does that April 30th date apply to people who aren't on this list? Because my recollection was that the notice about weed abatement actually was a month later. And then secondarily, the price, the price that's being charged, it seems incongruous to me that the price for doing an acre is actually less than the price for doing a quarter acre or a quarter to a half an acre. Could you explain why disking a larger parcel costs less than disking a smaller one? Thank you.
First is the timeline applies to all properties within the district. It's, we are only able to address issues on properties that have been through this hearing process. So if we find a property that's not on this list, we could send them a letter and add them to the next cycle, which would be next year. But we would not be able to force abatement on that property. So these are the ones that we can, we can go in and take care of the abatement if the property owners fail to do so. As far as the cost of doing a quarter acre cost being more than doing a full acre, it's the cost for the contractor to move the equipment. Moving equipment for a smaller job is a higher cost. And therefore they up the rate for small properties to, to make up the difference for fuel and such for moving the equipment around. So that's how the, the prices were proposed by the contractor for the contract in our bid.
If I may follow up, that doesn't make any sense to me. The cost of going to a property is the same irrespective of the size of the property. So I, I find it unconvincing as to why it would cost more to go to a smaller property than go to a larger one.
The best price that was bid on the, on the contract. So this is the prices that are being charged to the county and those charges are then pressed on to the property owner should the property owner not take care of the issue themselves.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the April 30th.
Chair Warren, can we just have the chair, can we have the comments directed to you, Chair Warren? And you can ask questions of Mr. Kumray.
Very good. Will do.
I apologize. You're, you're absolutely correct. And as far as the April 30th date, I believe we get a notice from the district or from the Santa Clara County Fire Department. Everyone gets a notice and I thought that date was actually a month later as far as the time to get your property cleaned up and inspected. Am I mistaken about that? Thank you.
Mo, what is the clarification on the dates?
The, the, the fire department on the brush program does have a later date because they don't need your authorization to inspect only to perform abatement. I have an earlier date because I need your authorization before I could do the inspection. So the fire department will inspect the properties. If they find them not to be completed, they'll give the property owner more a notice and then they'll send it through to me and it'll go to you for a hearing like this probably in May or June and then order abatement on those properties that don't comply. So they can do everything up to that point without having to do this. But they begin their inspections in April and May, so they're doing the same as we are.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mo. Any further public comment? All right. Hearing no additional public comment. The public hearing is now closed. The time is 7:21 PM. That was five A, so we'll now move to five B, which is a result, which is Resolution 22-3, which means I will now move forward with approving this list. Are there any clarifying questions for the commission on five B?
Yes, Terry has a question.
Yes, Terry, go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner. So it's not necessarily clarifying this list, but I would like to ask staff, what's been done to try to figure out why all but two of the 74 of these parcels are recidivists? There just seems to be an enormous turnover in people who are incapable of complying with the abatement. It's not necessarily a subject for this agenda item, but I want to just put that out there.
Let's see. Denise is not with us tonight. We'll need to take that back to staff unless, unless Jay, you have an answer off the top of your head.
Just the answer that I would put forward, but I would like Mr. Kumray to confirm it with me is oftentimes this is the manner by which the resident does clear their property and then they pay the fee accordingly. But that's just my empirical observation. Mr. Kumray, do you have any comment as to the recidivism of, of the multiple names on the list?
Jay, I think Mo already dropped off.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Then I would need to, to follow up with him unless he has some insight into that. The district clerk.
I do not have insight.
All right. Yeah. Let me then follow up. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Terry, I'll have to get you an answer offline off that one.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. No further questions from commissioners. I will now entertain a motion for item 22-3. Need a commissioner to make a motion.
Spring will move.
Thank you, Roger. I need a second.
Vaughn will second.
Thank you, Melvin. All right. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Are there any additional public comments on this item? All right, hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote on the resolution. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren.
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Spring.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Kavita, you are muted.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Great. Thank you. Weed Abatement Manager Kumray. He is now left. We will now move to item six, receive information pertaining to the local agency formation commission of Santa Clara County, also known as LAFCO, Fire Service Review and Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Studies. This is item six. General Manager Logan, please present the item.
Thank you, President Warren. The third meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee, which is the, the group that is working with the consultants for LAFCO, held its meeting in December and you'll see attached to your materials are the report of the TAC committee. To quickly summarize it, the Technical Advisory Committee received an update on the consultant's data collection efforts and preparation for the service provider profiles. And the Technical Advisory Committee also received a brief report on LAFCO's community outreach efforts. There were, I think, three community meetings. The TAC or Technical Advisory Committee canceled its December meeting and we were informed that this study for the LAFCO Countywide Fire Service Review is being extended. I believe it's two months. It was termed a few months for data and report analysis. And then the attachment is item six. Two, item six is that report detail. I don't have any further information on the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study at this time. So thank you. End of my report.
Great. Thank you, Jay. All right. Is there any comment or discussion or questions from commissioners regarding the reports, the studies? All right. Is there any public comment on the fire studies? You're seeing none. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll move to item seven, which is the chief report. Item seven A and seven B are the reports. Acting Chief Glass, please provide the reports.
All right. Good evening, President Warren and commissioners. Can you see the screen and hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Wonderful. You're looking at November 2021 since we canceled the December meeting at the commissioner's discretion. So I'll report briefly on the November and then I'll transition to the December for discussion. 744 calls total up until this point in November for 2021, the month of November saw 62 total calls. A regular dispersment by incident count and type looks to be consistent with 60% EMS service calls and fire alarms and no major dollar loss, which is excellent. The pie chart kind of shows how that distributes. And again, looking at lower left corner of the screen, call volume, excuse me, call response time. Again, well below our contracted response times metrics of 759 and 1159. So again, overall, November was a very good month for the district and for Central Fire District as well as, as we provided that service. And with that, I'll show you the map of where the calls were. I'm happy to take any questions on November's report and then I'll transition to December.
Okay. All right, let's move to December.
December. We finished the year 820 calls within the fire district. That's for the year 2021. You saw a little uptick, 76 calls in the month of December, but not anywhere off our average during that year. Call distribution, again, looks like EMS count was a little bit low at 51%. But that's, you know, I don't know what to attribute that change to. When you see an increase in call volume, we saw more service calls. I think we did have several storms roll through in December, which causes to have an increase in those type of calls. Response times here, we slipped a little bit. It, it shows that we have a 13-minute response for engine 75 and I believe we actually had truck 71 in one of these reports.
That was November.
That was November. They were doing driver training on the new TDA tiller and were in the area. And we did have a dollar loss of $500. This was due to a runaway propane heater underneath a outdoor wood pergola structure. Again, the homeowner had smelled smoke. The heater had been burning, burning, burning and the, the wood was pyrolicizing and giving off smoke. He shut off the gas and then tried to extinguish the fire himself, but we were able to keep it contained to a very small portion of his outside pergola. Distribution of the calls. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the month of December.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief Glass. Any discussion from the commissioners? Any questions from the public? All right, hearing none. We'll now move to item eight, which is review and approval proposed terms for a reimbursement agreement between the district and Central County, Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District for the build and purchase of a water tender. This is item eight. General Manager Logan, please present the item.
Thank you, President Warren. The memo report that is in the packet recommends approval of the proposed framework for the reimbursement agreement between Central Fire and the district for the purchase of a water tender for the benefit of the district. And Chief Glass is, is ready to sign the agreement for the purchase. Lead Deputy County Counsel Chelliden, representing Central Fire, and Assistant County Counsel Mitra, representing the fire district, worked with the respective parties on the framework in procurement of the water tender with the manufacturer. I recommend approval of the framework and then Chief Glass, County Councils, Chelliden and Mitra are available for comments or if there are any questions about the process. And just referring you to the framework in the memorandum, Central Fire would sign the purchase agreement in order to start the manufacturing, which takes about, I believe, 13 months, 13 to 16 months for delivery, but the chief can correct me if I'm inaccurate about that. Los Altos Hills would reimburse, Los Altos Hills County Fire District would reimburse Central Fire for the full cost of the purchase. County Central Fire will pay for the full purchase price at the same time of the execution of the agreement with the manufacturer. Central Fire would own, operate and maintain the water tender and indemnify the fire district for its use. The water tender would be used primarily for the benefit of the fire district. The water tender would be used for mutual aid and within county fire operation area that includes Santa Clara County and immediate adjacent counties. In event of outside, immediate, outside the immediate, immediate adjacent county area, Central Fire would notify the fire district and deployment of the water tender would be for a limited duration. And the final reimbursement agreement will be, would be submitted to the Board of Commissioners at an upcoming meeting. So that's very quickly the highlight of the framework for the terms of the agreement. So based upon that, just if Chief Glass or County Councils wish to make any comments, please do so at this time. Thank you. Chief Glass or county councils wish to make any comments, please do so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. With President Warren's permission, we traveled to Pennsylvania and did the pre-construction meeting for the water tender. I do have a drawing available for folks to see. This is built on an Orange County Fire Authority water tender model. And I think it will serve the district very well moving forward. And I will pop an image up on the screen for you guys to take a look at. It is a CAD drawing. And this is some of the measurements, shapes and sizes. This is kind of how these fire engines start. Fire water tenders, fire engines, they start as drawings on CAD to make sure everything can work. And again, very short wheelbase, low overall height, two thousand gallons of water, five hundred GPM pumping capability, small amount of hose in the back. Obviously, all the code three lighting necessary to respond to emergencies and provide scene lighting. Tucked away here in this area, and I'm not sure if you can see, it'd be on the right side above the rear wheels. That is a portable tank. You can drop down onto the ground and be able to have twenty-five hundred gallons of water. Stored there while the water tender makes trips back and forth. A bumper turret mounted on the front to be able to pull up and attack and extinguish fires with limited folks that are on board this and keep them at a safe distance. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions about the water tender or the purchase process. And General Manager Logan was correct. It is two hundred and ten build days from receipt of the chassis. So the chassis, we would have to get the chassis from the manufacturer first. And then in the contract, if executed, they have a two hundred and ten day deadline to deliver the vehicle into California.
Right. Hang on, Terry. We'll get to you in a second. County Council, any comments from either one before we go to Commissioner Kearney?
I have no comments. This is Steve Mitra.
Thank you, Steve. Chris Shellin, any comments?
No, no comments. Thank you, Chair Warren.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney?
Thanks. Yeah, chief, a question. What's the typical duration for deploying tenders on mutual aid?
Yeah, thank you.
Adjacent counties, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. A point of clarification there, within Santa Clara County, we'd be providing mutual aid to our neighboring fire agencies. And then we term it the adjoining operational areas, and that's where we can do reciprocity mutual aid across county borders that we touch. Typically, those are limited in duration, but can extend up to fourteen and as long as twenty-one days. It's not the overall intent for the deployment of this water tender. And just so that members of the commission know that the Central Fire District also has an additional water tender that is located in Montessorino that is already on your dispatch strings now. So we have multiple redundant. This will add a redundant resource. So if one were to go out, it could go into Santa Cruz County for twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two, ninety-six. And we also have the ability to recall that resource if we had a fire threat. No one agency is tasked with overburdening itself. So there were times during last year's fire season where we recalled apparatus back to the county due to the threatening, the threats of the SCU and the CZU fire. So it's really, it's really kind of up to what we feel is going on within our op area. But typical deployment for a resource like this and to outside counties would be about fourteen days at the outside, the max.
Great. Thank you, Chief Glass. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, so what I want to do here is, thank you, Chief Glass. Thank you, County Council. So what, because we obviously, we don't have the final agreement in place here because the contracts haven't been executed and we don't have a final bill yet from Central Fire. But what I want us to do here is to get on record to have a sense of the commission approving. The move forward with this so that we're on records as the commission supporting this project. So that we can get, keep this project moving forward. As we heard that, you know, this is a thirteen-month process, so this earliest this is going to be available will be obviously the twenty twenty-three fire season. But we got to start now to have this resource available. So I want to, what I want us to do is to get a motion to, from a commissioner to. Approve with moving forward with this agreement with Central Fire. And then we will just do a roll call vote from the commissioners. Regarding the motion to move forward with supporting procurement of the water tender with Central Fire. All right, now, any further questions before we ask for a motion?
I just would like to state for the cost, Chief Glass, as I understand, it's about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Which has been budgeted and approved already in our budget process. Is, did I have that number right? Or Corey?
Four hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-three cents.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Corey, just to confirm that is budgeted and in our our budget, is that correct?
It's budgeted for fiscal year twenty-two purchase, five hundred thousand.
Yes, yes.
Is it cause that we can, that we will be able to expense that this year, even though it's not going to be here for twelve, for thirteen months? Will we be able to actually? Put the purchase in this year's budget? Or was it, I'm just wondering, is there any chance it's going to drag over into the next year budget?
I wouldn't believe so. I would think it would be purchased in this year's budget, which goes through the end of June. And I think the purchase is going to be made very quickly, the reimbursement. First of all, the chief would have to sign the contract and then we would reimburse because all the payment has to be made upfront.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's move to a motion. Need a motion from a commissioner?
There is a public hand up.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Alan. Well, hang on, I need, I need a motion. I got to get to him. I need a motion. Hang on, Corey. Need a motion, and then we'll go to public comment.
Spring will move to approve the proposed terms for the purchase reimbursement agreement.
Thank you, Roger. I need a second. Thank you, George. All right, any further comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you. We'll now move to public comment. Alan.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Is there a competitive bid that's required for this? It sounds like. The Santa Clara County Fire Department went out to a, to one manufacturer. So I'm curious as for a five hundred thousand dollar item, if there's a bid requirement for that. Also curious as to how often the chief thinks the vehicle will be used. And in the event that the vehicle is. Sent past mutual aid, that is outside the area of mutual aid. Typically, there's reimbursement by FEMA or Cal OSHA or Cal OES or someone like that. Who who will receive the reimbursement funds for the use of the vehicle? Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, so Chief Glass, question about competitive bidding on this. Is there a requirement and then reimbursement from seeing that the terms of the agreement are going to be that Central Fire is going to be responsible for that? For reimbursements?
Yeah, thank you, President Warren. The competitive bid process, so this was a tag on to Orange County's competitive bid process. So Orange County Fire Authority had a competitive bid process and in their. Bid spec, they have a tag on clause. And so we have the ability that it did go through a competitive bid process. And. I believe that's, that's how we, that's how we navigated that that process. And either of the county councils can jump in if they wanted to correct me.
Chair Warren, it's piggybacking is the term and it's an accepted procurement process. And when I work with Chief Glass and his staff, they are piggybacking off of a competitively procured. Contract based on the Orange County Fire Authority. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So good. So the public, the public interest is being protected here. All right. And then Chief Glass, regarding the, County Council Mitra, did you have any further questions? So you came up mute.
No, I don't have anything to add about that.
Thank you. Chief Glass, regarding reimbursement, if it goes outside mutual aid?
Yep, if it goes outside our mutual aid, Mr. Epstein is correct. There is a reimbursement process that is through the California Fire Assistance Act. And that is for use of the apparatus and personnel costs. And so again, those since those labor costs are bared by the Central Fire through the staff and the use maintenance. Wear and tear of the overall vehicle, that's where we capture that for its use in the mutual aid. Arena. And so again, that, my understanding is that would come back to Central Fire since we're on the hook to, you know, change the oil, change the tires. You know, those kind of things. And that's where that mutual aid reimbursement comes from. There is a a fixed FEMA daily rate. That is awarded to apparatus to cover that, the insurance and all of the different things that go into operating vehicles. And then, of course, like I said, the labor costs, which are strictly borne by Central Fire.
Very good. Thanks, Chief Glass. Any further public comment? All right, with hearing no additional public comment, we'll now move to a vote. District Clerk Bargus, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Vice President Von.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka. Commander, you're on mute again.
Right, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Right. All right. Now, I'm excited by this. This is, you know, the commission moved forward in terms of providing resources for the district. And for Central Fire and for mutual aid. This is fantastic. Just really wish it didn't take, you know, over a year to show up. But looking forward to having this resource available for the the community. This is good stuff. Thank you very much for everyone making this happen. All right, we'll now move to item nine, which is the general manager report. Items nine A and B are the reports. General Manager Logan, please present the reports.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Warren. This is the general manager's report and it is dedicated to the first couple of slides to our communications team. Which originated out of Strategic Goal Five that is aligned with Commissioner Joan Sherlock. And Commissioner Sherlock has put together a weekly team meeting. To provide us with generating educational outreach messaging to residents in the community via our website, social media, flyers, postcards. Mails, packets, videos, events and activities. And then we have a independent contractor, special events contractor, who's been working with the communications team. To increase the frequency of those posts to at least one post per week. And to coincide with, and you'll see it on the right side of that first slide, the two thousand twenty-two resiliency calendar. We're also seeking out partners with relevant media that we can share with our constituents. And so we're asking the fire district staff, commissioners, residents to amplify. Our messaging to increase the audience and help educate our community and provide resources with those three links, once to Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. And we're continuing to work with our contract videographer on generating video content for the social media. And we're developing a digital newsletter to distribute by email and on media platforms. So really good things occurring with our communications team. Part of the examples are the Zone Haven campaign, and hopefully you all received a packet in the mail. And it had those various items in it. I thought that was a wonderful way in which the district could express its identity to its residents. By providing that information at the start of two thousand twenty-two, particularly with our resiliency calendar. And then the Zone Haven information in flyers and the magnets, stickers and magnets. And then we've expanded our defensible space brush chipping program. Very excited about that. And hopefully you all received this large postcard in the mail, which invited the residents. When they have large quantities of brush that's been shipped for defensible space. That they can then just register online and not have to wait their twice-a-year routine to receive that service. But they can have their service, they can have the service at any month. And this is possible because of the new technology we're using with Fire Safe Council to be able to operate routes with our contractors. So that's the communications team input. Then the next is a very important letter that I received from FARA, and FARA is the Fire Agency Insurance Risk Authority. And the advisory was for EPL, Employment Practices Liability. And basically, what the letter did was put the district on notice of new protocols. That EPL, Employment Practices Liability, is the single greatest liability risk for employers and for the risk pool. Requires members to engage outside employment law counsel for complaints. And I have attached to this, to the slide, a list of the examples of complaints that can come in. From employees or from members of in the commission. And if we don't follow that that guideline, then we become subject to a twenty-five thousand dollar minimum EPL deductible. The new protocols went into effect January first of twenty-two. And I replied to confirm that the Office of County Council, their employment law group, would satisfy this EPA protocol for use of outside legal counsel. And then on the right side of the slide, you'll see examples, just some select examples of employment actions that require legal attention. Provided by FARA, and FARA provided these examples. Complaints of harassment, victim of a hostile work environment based upon protected category. Complaints of retaliation based upon protected category, complaint of bullying in the workplace based upon protected category. And that the district failed to prevent discrimination, harassment, bullying, or failed to investigate allegations, any of those complaints. That's a partial listing. Again, the full letter is attached to the packet. And so given how important personnel management is, and we have now personnel that's coming on board. What I wanted to do is provide some information to the commission. That reminds them that they approved an anti-discrimination harassment retaliation policy in July of twenty-one. And that the commissioners and staff complete mandated anti-harassment training and ethics training. And that the GM demonstrates a proactive pattern of advanced consultation with county councils. The MRG consultant and educates commission and public at large on EPL topics. Basically, this is one of those preemptive demonstrations of that pattern. And personnel processes include onboarding and offboarding procedures. That utilize forms and processes compliant with California law. For staff, there's opportunities for professional development, career support advancement workshops. To help with continuous improvement for performance reviews. We have timely workers compensation support. And the district follows required anti-harassment ethics training mandates for all staff and commissioners. And the district utilizes Office of County Council and our MRG consultants for these processes. Okay, moving to the last slide, just a, again, an update that we are now in the process of an RFP. For selecting a managed service provider for our IT services. And with that, I will end the report and stand ready if there's any questions or comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right, is there any discussion from commissioners regarding General Manager Logan's report? All right, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none. I would like to reiterate, got the packet. Starting the new year, I thought that was a great way to start the the new year with, you know, the resiliency calendar and all the Zone Haven stuff filled it out. You know, looked it up, put on my sticker, you know, what zone I'm in. So I thought that was a great way to start the new year. So thank you, staff, for doing that, pulling that together. All right, then if there's nothing further, we will move to the item ten, receive the operations reports. All right, items ten A and ten B are the emergency, this is manager and cert general analyst reports. Cert general analyst BB, please provide the reports.
Thank you, President Warren. Good evening, commissioners, staff and the public. Welcome to two thousand twenty-two. We made it this far. I'm going to start off with doing Nace's report, her emergency services manager report, then I'll give my my report after that. So her typical meetings, you know, haven't changed much. We do want to point out that there are still Zone Haven webinars, speaking off of what President Warren said. Coming up through Santa Clara County Fire Department, the first week of February, on the third, and then again in March. If you have not been able to attend those, I really, really, really stress, if you can make those, please do. A lot of good information. They go over exactly how to get on to the platform and more about kind of, you know, the zones and how they work and what they're being used for. Most of the projects going on right now for Denise really are around Hidden Villa. I believe that Dave will probably speak more onto that. As well as a new project that we're hoping to get done in this first quarter, which is an evacuation route hardening on Altamont Road. We had our first planning meeting a week or so ago, and I'm sure that Dave and Roger will also be speaking with that in their reports. That is kind of the end for Denise. I know that she will be back next week to have more projects being started, I'm sure. Let me stop my shirt because sometimes my screen does not let me go to. Let me stop my shirt, because sometimes my screen does not let me go to different things here. So my cert program general ass report, February, sorry, December, let me go back, in December, we just kind of did some end of the year things. I did work on the resilience calendar. I'm glad to hear that you all like that. We did a different twist on it this time. Our social media will be revolving around our key topics for each month, and thank you to Andrea for her help on that. For me, I am now helping out with Firewise more than I have before. So I've been really working with Saddle Mountain. I believe that we were going to be, I think, next week. Hopefully trying to pay, we're going to gain them recognized. So they've come a long way, and they'll be our first Firewise community, and I'm really excited for that. One, one bad news, but then some good news. Because of this new Omnicron variant, we did have to postpone our Academy for teen cert and this adult cert program that was supposed to happen this weekend. It was with a heavy heart. I had to do that because I've got these teams that just want to get through this program. So we're hoping to have that back up and running in March. We'll see how far we get. I have been also attending some various EOC trainings, Emergency Operations Center. I want to be able to train our certs on running that EOC, as well as giving to the ECC. I have been, I think, on the agenda for the next ECC meeting to become associate, and I'm also helping them with their secretarial duties as well. We did also have a very elaborate training program put together for year 2022 in collaboration with Los Altos. I'm really hoping that some of you can come to the meetings and the trainings. A lot of them are virtual, some of them are in person. Happy to announce that I'll be teaching Stop the Bleed once a month down at the Los Altos Recreation Center, the new one. So come on out and play, play with us. Pretty fun. We've got some, some good props to play with. So definitely, I hope to see some of you guys there. Also working with GIS mapping with Dave and Patrick, our GIS consultant, and Sarah, and some of our key cert supervisors on looking at Zone Haven and old cert zones and how we can integrate that, since we don't want to have people have to remember 10,000 zones. We do, I do want to highlight one thing. I've been working really hard with the town of Los Altos Hills to do some more activities during the year. So this new activity guide that's coming out from March to August is going to be robust with some of our district activities. I'm going to do a tween cert day camp. I don't want to leave the tweens out, because a lot of them really want to take the program, but they're a little young. We'll be doing that alongside Los Altos Hills Recreation Department. Breakfast with the goats is going to be a real fun one. Coffee with the district as well. We're going to also have teens orientation and a new concept that we're coming up with where a neighborhood can request to have us come out and talk about all our programs within the district. Our emergency response programs, hoping to bring out the sheriff's office and Santa Clara County Fire Department as well. And do, we can't really call it a block party, but we're working on some good wording for that, and also bringing in the neighborhood watch component, too. So look forward to seeing that in the activity guide. Lastly, we had a volunteer of the year award ceremony. I nominated three of our certs at the Emergency Medical, Emergency Managers Association, end of the year recognition event. They were awarded awards through that association. So congratulations to Ed Bridgeman, Amina Satcheva, and Steve Kellum. Steve, for his help with the ARC, and he's a lot of the orders and refreshing of the ARC. Amina for her work in evacuation and educating her neighbors on emergency preparedness. And then Ed, just because he's Ed, he's cool. No, Ed's been around for like, I don't know, 15 years, and he goes to all the events. He's got great energy. He likes to educate people on emergency preparedness, and I'm really proud they're part of our group. We did have an end of the year party. We had so much fun. No one liked to picture. So unfortunately, a lot of pictures to show, but it was a very great event, very well attended. We gave some more honors out, had some really good food, and it was a nice way to end the year. And I don't think anyone got COVID from that. It didn't do anything, so thank goodness we're not on the news as super spreader. That is it for me. I will hand it over to Jay Barnett.
Thank you, Victoria. All right, hang on. Let me just make sure there are any questions from the commissioners regarding the report. Any public comments? All right, yeah, seeing then, we'll now move to item 10C, which is the receive the operations manager report. Operations Manager Barnett, please provide your report.
Thank you, commissioners, staff, and public. This will be my first operations manager report, so I'll be as concise and complete as I can. Victoria, are you sharing the screen?
You said you wanted to, but I can't. You want me to do it?
Can you show the screen, please? I have the screen up, but I don't know if I have the capability.
Yeah, 10C.
Great. Can everybody see, Commissioner Warren, can you see the screen?
Looks good.
So the events and activities that I've been working with staff and our cooperators with is to let, this goes back to December. The Almonte Moody Road evacuation hardening is complete. We did have a December meeting to report this out. It went over, and we completed in early December. Thank you, Eugenia, for joining the meeting, and thank you to Fire Safe Council, and to Irene, and to Jim Young, and to Denise, and to all the contractors that did a great job. We had tremendous feedback, and we'll be getting a report back from Fire Safe Council, hopefully in February, to summarize the activities and the finances. I've completed my time as a consultant, so thank you, Corey. Now I've been onboarded as an operations manager, and General Manager Logan reviewed a bunch of the things, ethics trainings and others, to ensure that our best practices are in place here at Los Altos. So firsthand experience with the onboard, onboarding, and it was very simple and professional. Thank you again, Corey. So let's discuss maybe this further in detail under Commissioner Spreen's direction and report of ad hoc, but to introduce here, working with a team of staff as well as the Santa Clara County grant, Paris to Najaf. We have submitted a CALOES notice of interest, which is, again, just a notice of interest. It is not an approval of a grant to CALOES, and if approved, then we would be submitting a grant sub-application that would take potentially a year to 18 months to go through the FEMA processes of approval. So right now, that was submitted in early January before the deadline, which was January 21st. So we should be hearing in 30 days on that. We've been aggressive scheduled a project planning for the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Program. Quarter one, we're, as Victoria shared, Denise and we're working with Fire Safety Council and implementing what we've done for Moody Road and Altamont Road. And then we're also have a scheduled property assessment for the Hidden Villa property. Property hardening around the structures. And so Fire Safety Council will be coming in to do an assessment, develop a report. So that is a very large property and a very large HIZ assessment inspection that will be undergoing. So very positive there. Then we're already starting the I-280 staff discussions. We worked and had some discussions with Caltrans to start scoping out the project. Some GIS work has been done to prepare us for the sub-application process, because we do want to move forward with the I-280 project. And so we want to plan for it, and hopefully we can get a grant, but we have planning to do anyway, whether it's grant approved or not, because again, this is a project that is a priority as identified by the CWPP annex that we're responsible for, and it's a major artery for evacuation. So we're having initial staff discussions, as I said, and had a great conversations with Caltrans staff. Researching equipment purchase and planning, that will become to a staff report to the next month, talking about a remote mastigator in collaboration with Midten, which would be potentially stored by Midten to assist with getting the Los Altos Strategic Fuel Break in place. They used it on the Moore Trail. The Green Climber is one that I currently researching. It's, it's a one-of-a-kind machine. No others compare, but researching it to make sure that the procurement process and that the is appropriate for what we'd be purchasing, and then as well as that there would be use, not just by Midten, but potentially other agencies' locations where it could be used to make sure it's justifiable for us to purchase it. And then done quite a bit of RTIS training to produce these maps. Some were shared on the screen. And then I've also been researching under the direction from General Manager Logan on other grants that we may be pursuing. Calfire Prevention Grant has a window open now, and then they'll open up another one likely in the fall, which we may pursue. The meetings, district meeting with Fire Safety Council, ongoing, the ad hoc meeting, the GIS meetings. And we're going to have regular ongoing meetings with Fire Safety Council to implement these quarterly projects under this aggressive schedule for 2022. So that is the report. Listed there are some upcoming meetings and plans for coming in that February and January. And the, ready for any questions if the commissioner has any.
Right.
Warren, if I could, I'd like to just comment that Eugenia Rendler, Managing Director for Fire Safety Council, is online and available to amplify some of these comments that Dave has spoken about. Eugenia?
Eugenia.
She's going to talk about HIZ and the Hidden Villa Assessment and Evacuation Route planning.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the Hidden, the Hidden Villa property assessments are really exciting project. We've done a similar thing over from Montalvo, and it was in Saratoga, and it was very effective. Dave's been doing a great job with the communications in terms of reaching out to their board and their, and finding out their goals, and we're going to come in at the end of this week and do all the property hardening, the structural hardening, things like vents, roofs, things like that, December, the defensible space, and we'll also look through the area that they've described as being ready and willing to harden for a temporary refuge area, assuming that, you know, there was challenges with the currently hardened evacuation route or county fire or CAL FIRE needed to, or mutual aid or whomever needed to have somewhere to stage. They've already gotten approval for that through their board of, yes, we want to learn how to do that and be a resource for that area and that community. So kudos to all of you and the team that are putting together that Hidden Villa large, you know, parcel. It's hundreds of acres over there, and this is great. This brings a lot of community involvement, and it's the second time that, you know, we've been involved in bringing a specific large land owner into a larger regional solution. So yeah, doing a great job with that. The HIZ status for your individual parcel owners, I know that, you know, we've gone back and forth through the year with COVID and all the rainbow of tears and things. We've also hired additional staff to serve your residents that want HIZs, and I'm happy to report the waiting list is down to 10. All of them have been contacted. Two of them are scheduled. So we only have eight folks left that have responded that they still do want an HIZ, and we're working on scheduling dates. So really pleased with that, being able to help people and be COVID safe at the same time. Full transparency on that. We have dropped everyone off the waiting list and archived the requests that are prior to September 1st who have not responded to three different emails for scheduling requests. So, you know, that's part of the reason that the waiting list is down. The other part, of course, is that we performed a whole bunch of them now that we've had new staff and worked out COVID safe procedures for the HIZ. So that part is also exciting. We're getting out there and helping people. And then, of course, chipping, I believe that the chipping reports are included in your packet. You guys are setting record numbers here. Your residents are really doing a great job. We're, you know, double what we were last year and the year before. You've broken triple-digit participation this fall, so it's really wonderful.
Eugenia, can you answer the question that was raised earlier by Alan regarding how the procedures were used for the chipping program? Where instead you were, the team just showed up and conducted the chipping rapidly as opposed to the previous bidding process? Or should we?
We implemented software called Chipper Day from Fireside, and it went active in August. And now people's applications, they're self-reporting categories of the size of their piles when they're applying. And then we can build an RFQ directly from those reports. So we're not having to have our staff drive around and measure all the piles and then submit bid requests, and then the contractor verify the piles before they put their bid in. Now those reports are already generated once, so it's saving quite a bit of staff time and payroll to you, and it's saving time for the contractor to produce a bid, which means that we're getting more contractors that are interested in it. Because to have three or four of them try to bid on it, knowing that they're only going to get one month's worth of work, we were getting months where they wouldn't even return our requests. So it's actually, it's actually helped. And then there's a small, we've built in a system that if we get to a house and the pile has been put into the wrong size category by the resident, because not everybody knows, you know, exactly how to walk those off and things. There's a, there's a fixed overage that the contractor will say, well, it was really this big, so we need to add X amount of cubic yards to the invoice. And the person following around in the car was actually Irene. She's your current chipping coordinator, and she spot checks more than half, if not all, of the contractor's works, answers any resident questions at the time. You know, she just generally keeps an eye on things to make sure that people are happy, the contractors know what they're doing, she can intervene on any addresses that may have two piles out and one got missed and they need to come back to, et cetera. She's just quality control right on the, in real time.
Great. Thanks, Eugenia.
Commissioner Warren, if you
Yes.
add one thing on Hidden Villa, which I forgot to mention.
Please go ahead.
Okay, just for clarity and full disclosure, if with the Hidden Villa project, they have, the board has volunteered, and we are to be a temporary refuge area. This is the board of Hidden Villa and a temporary evacuation point. We are working with Los Altos Hills Town and their update of their evacuation plan to communicate that as they will finalize. Right now, Foothill College is listed as a temporary evacuation point in the plan. And the update is great news that Hidden Villa will offer that as well. So while we are not the deciding fact, we are not the deciding who gets to be, we can offer that and collaborate and coordinate that effort in this property hardening. So it's great news with Hidden Villa. And everything should work out where we have another temporary evacuation point officially in Los Altos Hills evacuation plan at their discretion as they work with, with Hidden Villa and any agreement that needs to be in place.
Great. Thank you, Dave. All right. Thank you, Eugenia. If there are no further comments. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none, any public comments? Alan? Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the feedback on the chipping program. Thanks, thanks so much on that. I'd be curious if there are some statistics that are maintained on the home hardening. How many properties have requested? How many properties received it? How many people dropped off the list? And if there's any follow-up to determine whether or not the recommendations are, that have been made by the inspector are actually carried, carried out. I think it's important to keep track of these key performance indicators so we can measure the progress that the district is making in improving conditions throughout the time. In addition, I'm curious about the Hidden Villa assessment. I'm assuming that all of these assessments, both for Hidden Villa and for the various parcels in town are done for, are done for free. I just wanted to verify that, that that was the case. Thank you.
All right. Dave, can you answer those questions?
All right. In regards to the H I Z inspection of Fire Safety Council, there is a fee and I'll, I'll refer to Jay. For any questions related to H I Z and the fee structure associated with that, or, or.
Jay, are you?
Sorry about that. Uh, we're going to be working with Fire Safety Council and working out those details. So I'll come back with a report on that. Uh, we're not doing, uh, structure pardoning assessments. We're doing vegetation, uh, assessments. Uh, Eugenia, anything you want to comment there on the assessment routines?
We do, we do give them some home hardening, um, assessment from what you can see while we're looking at the defensible space. We don't go inside houses. We don't look at people's attics, things like that, that would be a much more thorough home hardening. But we do look at vents, double pane windows, the things you can see from outside their houses.
Yeah.
Um, that's the, the NFPA protocol and.
Right, right now, the plan is to continue with the H I Zs, just like we've done over the last couple of years. And, uh, Fire Safety Council bills, the district and the district pays the bills and that is done, uh, for the homeowner's benefit. Uh, we're going to be targeting properties that are particularly along the strategic fuel break area. And, uh, that's going to be very important so we can target where our, um, where our efforts are strategically with lowering fire risk. Thank you.
Okay. And then I think there's a further follow-up question. I think actually it's probably a good question. This is that if we can, you know, probably quarterly get some metrics on number of, of properties inspected. And, you know, all the, all the appropriate metrics, that'd be good.
Okay. So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional public comments? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. We will now move to item 11, which is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Projects and Proposals.
I'll take that. Actually, let me start a, uh, share here if I can, uh, just always. If I can find it, just a second. Some of the windows open. There is the. I hear you. And. Let's see. Uh, here, let's see. Can you see anything? The slides?
Yep, we're looking great.
So what I want to say is, I hope your impression is the same as mine, which is on those last few staff reports, just the, the dazzling number of things going on right now. And perhaps more importantly, the, the scope of them, both in size and in aggressiveness and time. Um, and those of us on the hazardous fuel reduction subcommittee, uh, get a little more luxury of having another meeting to really dive into some of these things. Um, and really understand them and see them. And, and this month, Commissioner Kearney and I got to spend the time with, uh, Dave and Denise and Jay and Marcy. But to go over that, what I'd like to, I don't want to repeat things that you've already seen, but I think we, there's two things like to accomplish here. One is to kind of give an overview of all the things going on because it is a very impressive list and it helped me. And by the way, I want to thank Marcy for taking great notes on this so that I could convey it in terms of what's going on and how it fits into the bigger picture. That'd be the first thing. Let's do that. So, um, just want to go over the work plan of these are the things you've already heard about, but how does it fit into the, the timeline? What's going on this year and what is staff planning to do? These are items that really fit into our strategic goals, one and three, which is the CWPP and the hazardous fuel reductions. There's some overlap, but both of those fit in here. Q1, so really, and, you know, we're already, as, uh, President Warren said, we're already two thirds of the way through January. So just in Q1 alone, here's what's going on. Continuing to work on this grant for I-280 project, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. Completing the ultimate road hardening project, assessing Hidden Villa, which is really, uh, I like to say, not only a significant project in itself, but really represents. Uh, a, a very positive collaboration with Hidden Villa in a way I haven't seen in quite a while. And so I'm very excited to see them drawn in, in a very collaborative way this way. Also.
Do you mean, do you mean to be showing slide two now?
Uh, oh, yes, it was under Q1 to 2022. That shows, I'm going to go back.
Yeah, you're in work mode. You're not in presentation mode.
You're not in presentation mode.
Oh, great. Uh. Let's try this again. Okay. Q1 to two, two, so. Hidden Villa Assessment, scoping Loyola, more drive area and define those project components for coming up. That's going to happen this first quarter. So I want to notice how, after having done the Moody Road project last quarter. Look how much is going on this coming year to really ramp that up. So we've learned a lot from that, but really this is a very aggressive take on going after a lot of evacuation routes quickly. Um, also scoping out Page Mill Road Maintenance Plan, because once we start cleaning these areas up, we gotta go back and we can't forget about that. And finally, also in Q1, participating, there's an upcoming meeting for the county update, the CWPP. And this will have us involved with Cowfire, the county and a lot of other stakeholders. That's a lot in Q1, but when you see these are really the major strategic items coming up in Q1. Now, can you see the next slide?
Yep.
Good. So in Q2, um, uh, so we will be, uh, continuing, uh, the hazardous fuel reduction at Hidden Villa. Actually doing some of the work there and with the goal being to get some of it done before they, they start their June camps. And by the way, Dave, if I say anything wrong, feel free to jump in and correct me. I hope I'm saying this correctly. Um, cause as you know, they do a lot of summer programs in Hidden Villa, so getting things done before June, they have deadlines where they need us out of the way, getting the work done. Also in Q2 is doing another assessment project on all the fire roads, uh, in town, which is another sort of things we've always had on our list. We've really never tackled and got it into detail. So this is really adding more to our list of, of new work. And finally, we also want to be considering some other grant opportunities. One of the things that this first discussion of grants, which again, we'll discuss in a minute. Not only are we gaining some expertise very quickly, uh, in what this means, but, uh, the grants are also helping us get involved with other communities, other agencies. Um, and this is another way to collaborate with other agencies. And so in Q2, we want to be looking at what other possibilities are there to collaborate? And with grants can both bring in more resources for us and have us working with other agencies. Q3, uh, we actually hope to begin some work with mid pen on strategic fuel break. As you know, what a massive project that is. I will point out that many of the projects already going on in Q1 and Q2, Altamont, Loyola, Moreau, I-280. Fit into the strategic fuel break project, um, as well. But Q3 will be trying to work with mid pen to move that forward as well. So this is just a way to give yourself a timeline of how these things fit together. What's going to be happening over the next nine months and to see that. No question, any questions there? If not, so we'll talk, the other thing we want to do coming out of the meet, our meeting is talk a little bit about this FEMA grant in detail. Um, to make sure that everyone on the commission is, is, uh, feels they have good understanding of what this means. And to get a consensus of direction to make sure that we all have the same understanding and any pros and cons or thoughts about it. The key thing is that this will, this project, which is really cleaning up, uh, a longstanding need to clean up 280. I think almost five miles of it, I might be wrong. Will be coordinated with Caltrans, Fire Safety Council, Foothill College, which borders 280 as well. Um, we'll also be inviting Stanford in on it if they'd like to participate since they have lands along 280. And also the Parks District sort of on the south side to participate as well. So there's a lot of agencies that ultimately could get involved and we will try and be coordinated with this. Financially, the reason we, you know, we're looking at this is it's a big project, but FEMA has funds specifically for doing this kind of thing. And, uh, want these funds in to be in process. The, the project we're looking at would, uh, be a $3 million project of which two and a quarter, two and a quarter million would come from FEMA. We would participate with $105,000. So the way to look at that is it's a Forex multiplier on our taxpayer funds to get projects done in, in our district. So, um, let's talk more about the pros and cons of this project. And for this, I'm going to sort of, uh, throw it to Dave, sort of get his sense of this. He's, he's the one who's been thrown to the wolves to figure this all out. Cause you know, we don't have a grant writer, uh, in our staff. We don't have experience in this. This is something that people normally hire some profession to do. We will be looking to bring some expertise on as necessary, but Dave has been the one who's been sort of, uh, uh, kicked in front of it, the front line to figure out what it means for us. Dave, any, any comments here?
Well, I, I appreciate, uh, uh, your summary, uh, very accurate. And, uh, I also have to thank Jay and Sarah and Marcy for the support. And, and, and Paris Tu, Najaf really needs to be called out and she's not on, but she works for Santa Clara County Office of Emergency Management. And without her and her guidance on the Cal O E S, uh, grant process, um, we, we wouldn't be here today with one submitted. So it was really a team effort and it was, uh, a great to be part of. Cal O E S also is very responsive. So, uh, we've got the support to do this. We have the support moving in the sub-application process. But really what I, I would like to highlight for the commissioners on the pros and cons. Um, we've listed some pros and cons here, you know, it's a fort, it's a multiplier on the funds that the district has, um, to implement the project. Uh, the project is a phased project right now is planned over three years. It has the maximum window is a three-year window to, to complete it. Um, and so there'd be accountability, obviously FEMA sets up transparency. Um, uh, so that every dollar spent, uh, it's a competitive bid process. So the taxpayer funds are, are, are protected, both the federal as well as the district money is protected by the, by the, uh, the processes that are in place by Cal O E S and FEMA. And we have, um, a collaboration regionally and statewide. So, uh, for us to put this grant on, uh, would be really a, um, a positive for the district. Uh, getting the experience, developing the relationships, uh, and getting this done would, would all be positive for the district. Uh, the major con, uh, that I, I just want to, to share is, uh, we can't start work, any work on 280. So the hazard is there right now. I mean, the, the, if you look and drive 280, there hasn't ever been a heavy fuel reduction in that area besides mowing by Caltrans. So you'll see ladder fuels, you'll see eucalyptus trees with fuels from the bottom to the top. And so it, it, um, needs work. And so if we go with a FEMA grant and decide to go with that, with it, we cannot start work likely for 18 months to two years. That's how long the process takes. So that's really the, the biggest con. Uh, if we have money to start the project and we could, then if that was decided, um, uh, by the commission, then we, we potentially could start, uh, this year. Um, and so moving down, and again, there's all the other positives that the grant brings us. And working regionally and collaboratively and, 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 and using the, the FEMA awarded money for the benefit of the district. But again, uh, it really, uh, creates, uh, it'll probably be 80 hours of staff work to do the grant sub-application and, 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 and. Uh, then all the staff work that goes with it, the accountability, um, uh, with FEMA will be additional staff work. And then again, we couldn't start work for 18 months. So that's pretty much a summary of the 280 project. Uh, and I can take questions from the commissioners or as, uh, President Warren directs.
Yeah, uh, if I could say, I'd love for you guys to ask questions. I'd like to, I want to focus the discussion because ultimately it's the question is we'd like some consensus, uh, to move forward or not. Um, so I hope your questions, uh, and your thought process is, is this sounding a good thing? What, you know, what worries you, what concerns you, or what sounds exciting? Um, and we definitely want to hear from everyone on the commission.
Great. Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Dave. So what we'll do is let's, um, let's get comments and questions from commissioners. Um, hear from, open it all up and up for public, uh, feedback. And then we'll go to a, a sense of the commission. Um, so you guys will have guidance from the commission on this. Um, that having been said, uh, thanks for the, the report. Uh, all right, commissioners, uh, questions, comments, concerns? George, so you got your hand up? We'll start with you.
Well, first off, I was very excited to see this, uh, a week or two ago after the subcommittee meeting that I had to miss. And, uh, Highway 280 is something I drive by every time, and I think we got to do something about this. I think President Warren, you mentioned it first, and ever since you did, I, I've noticed it myself. So I'm really, really pleased to see this and it's such an important thing. I think the key thing is for people to realize that doesn't mean Highway 280 is our defense line. It's just one of several defense lines. That'd be the key thing. I think we'd want to make sure people didn't think. Uh, when I saw this, I thought. You know, I, I don't know how easy it is to work with Caltrans. And also I understand about this, this process. So I thought, my, my thought is. We get better leverage by the plan that you've described here, and I can see how that could be a good plan. But is it, is it worth it to us to pony up more that we could get started this year? I feel like that could be an important thing to do. So I'd be interested if there's some option or something in between that at least got us started. You know, of all the expense of, of that, that's, that length on both sides of Highway 280. If we identified the 10% of it that was most highest risk and we did that, we funded it ourselves, would we feel good about that decision? I think I would. So those are my comments.
George, I can just ask for a point of clarification. This is just agenda, this is just agendized as a receipt of an update. So I think commission input is great, but I think it's not really agendized for a formal vote and, and direction. I defer a little bit to Jay Logan as to what she wants to get out of tonight's meeting. But I would prefer not to have us take any kind of vote for any kind of formal action, just because it's not agendas as such.
Right. Yeah, we're just, just getting, having, this is a chance for, Chris, the way I see it is this is a chance for the subcommittee to get, discuss this with the commission and, and hear their input and, and thoughts on it. And we're not going to take anything formal. Is that fair?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank.
And, and can I share just one thing that I think is impactful for the process? Just to clarify, we, we submitted on the 11th. Uh, Cal O E S responded that they will get back to us in 30 days. Um, and then from there, there's the sub-application process, which so we could begin if it was approved and submit the subapplication process after that. And that period, as I understand it, is three months. So that's the timelines that we're talking about. And, uh, we are right now prioritizing the I-280 project as, uh, southbound west side. Um, the parcels and we would include in the product parcels where it makes sense to get the vegetation down to the freeway on the backside of the parcels. So individual parcels would be assessed to determine on those that it makes sense to bring the vegetation over the fence to the chippers on the freeway. And, and then we would target those parcels with, with potentially a ROE. Then the next priority would be northbound east side. And then the two projects would be center lane, northbound and southbound. So there's four projects associated with this. And that's just for further detail on this, as you consider over them, you know, when this does come to a vote for consideration, whether you want to get it done, uh, sooner or wait for the FEMA project, uh, uh, approval process.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Uh, my own two cents on this is, um, one, you know, I like to reiterate what George said. I'm very excited to see this. I've always been concerned. I've always been concerned that, um, one day we were going to have the wrong weather conditions. And we were going to have an, an accident, a car fire on 280 and we'd get an extension into the, the overgrown vegetation on the side of the freeway. And all of a sudden we've got a larger conflagration. It's always been one of my concerns. Um, and so great to see this moving forward. Uh, like to second George's comments about, you know, is there a way to speed this up? I know you guys are looking at it from both directions, so please do that. Uh, that's, so that's my two cents on this. Any other commissioners have comments?
Uh, I think I'll agree with what's been said before us. 280 is critical to, uh, the safe existence of Los Altos Hills. It's an evacuation route. It's a major artery that connects all parts of town. It's in our interest to keep two ways safe and hazard, you know, fuel, and fuel reduction is a big part of it. So I see no reason why we shouldn't move forward and do it expeditiously.
Thank you, Camille. Any other commissioners? All right, Roger, I think your subcommittee's, um, heard from the commissioners. All right.
But President Warren, just one comment on, on the report on the CWPP update provided in Q1.
Yes.
We are currently not participating in the CWPP update. It's, uh, I, it was actually announced on Fire Safety Council today that Fire Safety Council is meeting with Cowfire to determine that process. When they determine the process regionally and the leadership on updating the whole CWPP, we then potentially would be participating in those meetings on an update. So that may happen in Q1, but it will be driven by Fire Safety Council and Cowfire. And we do not know the details yet of that timeline for when we'll be participating as a stakeholder. But that will be reported out to the commission and the ad hoc, uh, when we know.
Great. Thank you, Dave.
And Commissioner, President Warren, I have a comment also. Uh, Eugenia Rendler from Fire Safety Council is with us. And Eugenia, could I just call on you, you can make a few comments about your expertise in working with, in the grant programs. Uh, you've done quite a bit of. You can make a few comments about your expertise in working with in the grant programs. You've done quite a bit of that.
Yes, and I'd like to just add a little bit of background to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grants. Last year, the so this is a national program, and last year they awarded 15 grants in California, and only one of them was for wildfire mitigation. 14 of them out of 15 were for flooding. So I just want to give you perspective on the breadth of what this program is addressing. This is not a wildfire only program. And encourage you, if you're motivated and in the position with other resources, there are steps that you could break this apart and do on your own to be ready if the grant finally does come in. It's definitely the grant that we put in, we put it in in February, and we didn't get word on the award awards until October. So it's a very long process just to even find out what your status is. In terms of working with Caltrans, we did a great deal of work with Caltrans on the SR17 project and also on the Upper Nine project. It's time to already be talking to Caltrans because you can't get into their work plan sometimes for a year or two. So there's a, you know, I know that Dave's been, you know, slowly figuring out who the right people at Caltrans are to engage. So I would encourage continuing that process while you're waiting for the grant wheels to turn. And then finally, since the grant would be public money and you are public money, you will need sequo documents, which is a combination of your own and Caltrans exemptions. So that is something you can also be doing while the grant wheels are turning that are discrete, you know, implement, you know, implementable steps before you get to vegetation management that will hold you up. If you do all these things linear, wait for the grant, wait for the NOE, wait for Caltrans, you're going to be pushing the operations period out quite a bit.
Great. Thank you, Eugenia. Thank you for your your expertise on how to navigate this. Great. All right. So I think we're done with commissioner comments. I think so, Roger, I think you're the ad hoc committee's got sense of the commission. So I'll move to public comment. Alan, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. My first question is, what distance from 280? When I say distance, I mean feet from 280, are we talking about doing this work? Second question is, these other participants, are they going to contribute towards the $750,000 that the Fire District will be responsible for? Third question has to do is some some of this, some of these adjacent properties, if it goes on to adjacent parcels, are privately held? Are they going to be responsible for paying anything? And then you you mentioned, Roger mentioned that there'll be work done by the Fire District on Hidden Villa property. And my question is, is Hidden Villa going to be paying for that, or is that going to be funded by the Fire District? Thank you so much.
Okay, so Dave, can you actually address the distance questions on 280? Other agencies' participation, cost contribution?
Yeah. So when it comes to the distance on 280, we have a project map. We've done several of the steps already, working with Caltrans on their their right of way. And there will be part of the sub application process would be working with Fire Safety Council to determine the actual scope of that project. And then during the sub application, so we could be scoped out properly, and and the map is absolutely critical to submit it. So really, there's going to be several areas on the sound wall where we don't go far from 280 at all, and we may not go on the other side of the sound wall. And then there's areas where there is no sound wall or foothill college. So each parcel will be assessed. It will at least be within the right of way of Caltrans, and then we will evaluate the topography and the fuels that are at risk and work with right of entries. And again, that is yet to be determined by the process of if we if there is work to be done on the backside in a private parcel, whether we can do work, whether whether that would be a rebate, whether we would do that work as part of the fuel bay project. We're on new territory and with this, the idea of doing a parcel that's next to 280 and just bypassing it and not reaching out to that homeowner either with notification that we're doing that work and trying to collaborate with that is one of the things that came out actually in the CWPP, the need to work with the homeowners on a project. And so whether we actually are able to do work on their property, whether it's just part of an HIZ inspection like we're doing with Hidden Villa, and they're responsible to do the work, that is something that will have to come to this commission once we work out those processes. So right now, I cannot say that our plan is for district money to be spent on private property. That is not our current plan. We have, we want fuel reduction on private property, how it's paid for, how we can do that is something that will be a future question for us to provide solutions for. As for the project, and that that same answer goes to Hidden Villa. Right now, we're doing an assessment, will evaluate it due to the community benefit that they are providing. Those questions will come up and we'll work through those processes over the next couple of months. We're not prepared at this point to fully answer the question. We want the vegetation reduced on Hidden Villa before the community fuel break, for the property hardening, for the community benefit there. We want the fuel reduced on 280 for the community benefit there, and that's our end goal. How we do that or who finances it is a question for this commission at a later time when we're ready to, when we're prepared. And as for the Stanford or the adjacent agencies that participate, that'll be worked out in the sub application process. Right now, we have notified Cal OES that we intend to submit for this amount, and we intend to submit this matching. If the grant application process has a Stanford or Santa Clara County parks, then we will adjust the amount, and there will be appropriate cost sharing depending on the portion that they're responsible for.
Great. Thank you, Dave. All right. Any further public comments?
I think Eugenia Rendler has a comment that she would like to make if there's no further public comments.
I don't see any further public comments. Eugenia?
So this is regarding the CWPP. I know that there's it. I know it keeps changing directions and that you all as County Fire District are probably getting different pieces of messaging as it changes. So since that your annex is within the scope of County Fire, the updates that they're working on do affect you and your annex being updated. And since CAL FIRE is working on the financial support for the overall county updates, we'll also, you know, be implementing that with them. So we support County Fires updates that are happening as well as we'll be working with CAL FIRE. So you'll probably be hearing from both entities directly from County Fire and then CAL FIRE through us. So I know it's a little bit confusing, and in past meetings, you may have gotten details that are now are no longer part of the process. But I I wanted you to know to make to make sure that you knew that yes, we will be working with both entities, both sets of goals have room in the timeline and the overall document update. We want to produce a countywide document with all the partners, not just only CAL FIRE driving or only County Fire driving or only certain towns driving, which is why we've kind of collected it under a nonjurisdictional entity like we are. So.
Thanks, Eugenia. Okay, let's move on from item 11. Wrap that up. Thank you, everyone. Quite extensive. Let's now move to item 12, which is the District Hydrant and Related Infrastructure Reports. Item 12A is an update on the DEPS Project Engineering Consultant Tarantino. Please provide the update.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Good evening, commissioners. So first item, the update with Prisma Hills Water District's DEPS Project. It's their upcoming water main replacement project. Last week, we received the 90% design supplemental from Pock Pork Consulting Group, who is providing engineering design services. And so we will be reviewing that design supplemental to identify those district fire hydrants that will be either relocated or new fire hydrants that are proposed. And we will backcheck that improvements against our last site visit with the Prisma Hills team. And so we'll we'll come forward with at another commission meeting with some additional details once we've completed our review and had discussions with Prisma Hills. So that's the report on the update to the DEPS project and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Engineering Consultant Tarantino. Any discussion with commissioners on the DEPS project? Any public comment on the DEPS project? All right, hearing none. Thank you. We'll now move to item 12B, which is a report on the project for the replacement of district hydrant valve covers. Engineering Consultant Tarantino, please provide the update.
Great. Thank you again, Commissioner Warren. So the town of Los Altos Hills, as we discussed with the commission back in October, was implementing their annual paving project where they improved pavement conditions on a number of different road segments throughout the town. There, within those paving limits, there were numerous district fire hydrants where in some cases, the the hydrant valve, so these are the the valves with the gate valves in the street, may be impacted by the paving projects. The work has been completed. It was completed in December. And a total of five district-owned hydrant valves were modified. So when they repaved the street, the elevation of the road was slightly changed with an overlay project. And so the the hydrant valve cover, which is basically the the metal cover and the and the concrete box had to be adjusted in height. So there was a total of five valves that were raised. The the paving work looks adequate to F and L. We did identify during our post-construction site inspection that the five valves have not been painted yellow yet. So we've communicated that to Bordalato and the Bordalato Company, who is doing the paving work for the town. I did speak with Robert Bordalato today, and they're planning on completing that work either later this week or early next week. We had asked all all work to be completed by February 15. There's additional details and and maps showing that the location of the five valves that were valve covers that were raised, including confirmation that we did look at all valves within the limits to ensure that they're all still accessible after the paving work, even if the paving work did not warrant an adjustment to the valve cover. So and that's the end of the report and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Seeing none. Any comments or questions from the public? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. We will now move to onto item 12C. Item 12C is the update on the Prisma Hills Water District Plan for Installation of Leak Sensor Caps. My district hydrant, district-owned hydrants, General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. Prisma Hills Water District General Manager Phil Witt and I have been in discussion about the process for an agreement between Prisma Hills Water District and the Fire District. County Council is assisting the Fire District to develop an agreement, submit it to Prisma Hills Water District for review by its legal council and the Board of Directors. And with approval, the agreement will then return to the Board of Commissioners for consideration for their approval. Prisma Hills Water District is now in the process of determining the number of acoustic sensor caps and the timeframe for installation. This information is necessary for the scope, terms, and condition of an agreement between the two parties. And General Manager Phil Witt is on the phone, is on the Zoom call with us. So Phil, could you provide some comments also as to how we are collaborating on this process?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for the time, and thank you for putting me on the agenda. I I certainly know this, this isn't the first time you guys have heard about this. So what what we're looking at is it's it's an acute acoustic sensor, just like General Manager Logan said, it listens to the water column, and it's able to predict via sound and correlation between the two fire hydrants through a cellular network, the potential for a leak, or maybe not a potential, but a, you know, a a small leak. We have recently had a couple of monster leaks that appear to have started from a small leak. So in the event of these water main breaks, obviously, that, you know, we have to shut down significant portion of water main, which shuts down the fire hydrants. So so in the in the event of, you know, needing water for for emergency and fire, these caps will, I believe, are going to be very helpful. San Jose Water, Alameda County Water Districts, these caps are going on nationwide. I don't want to get into a big sales pitch here, but I've I've seen it, and it looks like it's it's going to be a very helpful thing. However, Prisma and Los Altos Hills are unique in that Los Altos Hills County Fire District owns the fire hydrants where we need the agreement to put our leak sensors on your assets. So that's why that's why we're here. I do have to look into some grants. They're they're available. They're not open for application yet. However, by the end of this month, from what I've been told, we should be, we should be able to apply for the grants. The grants should should happen relatively quick months. This is not, we've already had a grant historically. I don't want to get into all of that, but just moving forward, I think we're I think we're moving forward with something really good here. Let's see, I got a couple of notes here. As far as completion to install this, depending on supply, supply is a a difficult thing these days in the pipeline world and as well as everything else. I've been told by the manufacturer, which is a, which is Mueller, Mueller's a very big water industry manufacturer, that we should be able to get all that we need, 400 plus, maybe 450, 460, and be able to get those in whole or be able to break it up. So I would anticipate that they're probably going to break up the order and get maybe 100 at a time. So 100 at a time, meaning 100 in the first half of the year and maybe 100 in the second half of the year. So hopefully be finished by the end of 2023. That's kind of, that's kind of the goal, but there's a lot of things in flux. So it's it's really hard to kind of give something definitive. But moving forward, I want to thank you, General Manager Logan. I keep working with on an agreement, and I hope that was brief. And if there's any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Mr. Witt, just pending an agreement, is there anything that I or the commission can do to support the application if Prisma Hills makes that to for a grant?
Much appreciated. Right now, I don't think so. I think I've got it teed up pretty well, but I do appreciate your, I do appreciate your offer, and I will certainly let you know if I if I need your help. But this this collaboration is very nice. Much appreciated.
Great. Good. So President Warren, I think that concludes our remarks, unless the commission wants to give direction to myself to take any point in time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Yeah. So what I'd like to do here is, is because, you know, obviously, we're it's premature to actually enter into an agreement. That's why we don't have one in front of us at this point. But I'd like to get a sense of the commission, any any feedback from commissioners regarding this project. Because we want to make sure that that Prisma Hills has the 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 support needed from the district to move forward so that they can go with their their grant proposals. So I want to make sure we have a consensus of the commission in this discussion here, you know, so they can move forward. Any comments, concerns, questions from commissioners?
Melvin gave a thumbs up. George has a question.
I wasn't sure who I was called on yet. So Phil, I'm glad to have you here. Thanks for giving us an update and and General Manager Logan, too. Also, I'm pleased to see this progress. We've been talking about this for a while. It's always made a lot of sense to me.
Go ahead, George.
I'm back.
Okay, so I, I love the idea of this, of a collaboration, especially when using technology to, in effect, reduce maintenance costs and especially save water, especially given this time. So I'm enthusiastic. You know, we had your, your board member Steve Jordan come, see us a couple, three times. And I always felt like, yeah, let's, let's find a way to make this work. And I'm glad that we're finding that we're doing so now. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. Yeah, that, I love Steve. He's a, but I'm glad that we, you know, General Manager Logan and I can kind of carry this forward. But I know, I know you guys have been busy lately.
Great. Any other commissioner comments? All right.
None except to say that I completely support this. It's been longer with you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kavita. All right, let's move to public comments. Alan, you have a public comment?
Thank you. I just would like to reiterate what others have said, that this is an important project. It's dragged on for a very long period of time. It's important to prevent pipes from breaking because when these mains breaks, they reduce, release huge quantities of water and we have a real problem with water shortage at this point in time. So I'd hope the commission would put it on the agenda for February's meeting to get an agreement signed. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Much appreciated. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the time. Thank you, General Manager Logan, for putting me on the agenda. Much appreciated.
Yeah. So Jay, I think the consensus of the commission is keep moving this forward and moving as forward as expeditiously as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. So noted.
All right. We'll now move to item thirteen. Thirteen A is the First Amendment to the General Analyst Employment Agreement with Victoria BB District Clerk Vargas. Please introduce the item.
All right. This agenda item is to discuss and take possible action to approve a First Amendment to the At-Will General Analyst Employment Agreement between the district and Victoria BB. The proposed First Amendment is included in the District Board of Commissioners' agenda materials for this item and includes a compensation increase. California Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection C, section three requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the First Amendment. The proposed First Amendment increases the hourly compensation rate by four percent from fifty-five dollars per hour to fifty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents per hour effective at February first, twenty twenty-two. All other compensation and benefit terms remain the same. And that's the end of that report.
Great. Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Are there any clarifying questions from commissioners? I'm seeing none. All right, I will now entertain a motion to adopt for item twelve, item thirteen A. Commissioner, please state your vote. Thank you, Kavita. In a second.
In seconds.
Thank you, Roger. All right. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from commissioners on approval? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, thank you. All right, we will now, District Clerk Vargas, we will now conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn.
Approved.
Commissioner Kearney.
Approved.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we will now move to item fourteen, the Financial Consultant Report, District and District Clerk Report. Item fourteen A is receipt of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three draft budget. Financial Consultant Vargas, please present the report.
All right, let me just get on share screen. And we're going to do our PowerPoints. Sorry. It's getting late.
Yep.
I want that one right there. There we go. All right, so we have all, I think, we already saw the fiscal year twenty-three draft budget at the November meeting. And I will just go over what few changes that were made between then and now. First, I just wanted to highlight, this is our little expenditure chart. It is showing the percentages of all of the sort of groupings, account groupings that we have. So we have, you know, our operating expenditures, salaries, payroll, professional services, our consultants. This is, the big green is the fire contract services and then the big blue is our projects and programs. I also did another chart where I've combined these accounts further down. So those accounts that are for direct fire protection and prevention, the, the contract fire services and the project programs, that makes up almost eighty-four percent of our total project budgeted expenditures for fiscal year twenty-three. And then you can see our administration, that's the operating and salaries, it's about ten point nine, it's about eleven percent. And then finally, the outside consulting services that we receive, about five point four eight percent. So just wanted to point out or highlight how, you know, the district really are focused in our mission. We are budgeting so that, that's the lion's share of our expenditures. Here I have just a showcase of a chart, revenues, expenditures, net income. The last three actual years are reprojected for the current fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And then again, the budget for the upcoming year. And you can see all three years there are showing actually revenues over expenditures, meaning we will have net income. And I want to, I guess that's the next slide. This next slide here, this is just the timeline. It's our development process. You know, we discussed it in November. The commission had an opportunity if they wanted to have a special December meeting to discuss it. And I think, you know, since we had a very thorough discussion in November, commission and listen consensus to cancel that meeting. So today, what we are going to do is just help go over those revisions. Any further revisions after today that are provided just by the county? I will, I'm looking for consensus from the commission tonight or direction from the commission tonight that Jay and I can make any county changes, so changes to revenues. We have the, the contract with Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. I haven't received the annual increase on that. So those figures could change slightly between now and when we have to submit the budget to the, to Oba by February eleventh, which is before our next commission meeting, February fifteenth. So what we're looking for tonight is sort of just a direction that, that we will submit sort of a draft to, to Oba. And then at the next commission meeting, we will approve the draft. So we're not really approving a final draft tonight. And then if, if for whatever reason, it doesn't get approved at the February meeting, Oba has generously allowed us that if we have even further changes after the February fifteenth commission meeting, we can get those send a reboot vision to them. So let me go to the next slide. So I just wanted to give a really quick overview and point out too that for the last, was it five fiscal years, fiscal years ending twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, each of those years revenues have exceeded revenues. And that total increase to our fund balance has amounted to almost eighteen million dollars. Now, another thing to point out too is for three of those last fiscal years, we have been dealing with COVID. So fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, and this current fiscal year twenty-two, COVID has really caused restrictions in the workforce. We've also had some unfulfilled staff positions. We've had lower expenditures and programs than we had anticipated, mostly due to COVID. We had a little bit of over budgeting of fire services and then of course, unspent contingencies. So for this upcoming fiscal year twenty-three, we want to increase obviously our expenditures, our public services, but we want to increase those and we can increase those. But we need an increase in personnel consulting resources to support the increase in operations and program capacity, such as the implementation and oversight of projects, programs, prevention, and building of community resilience to benefit residents in the region. Now, I think the greatest example of this is we brought Dave on and as we saw a couple of reports back, now we're getting this I two eighty program really off and running. But another obstacle is, as Dave said, it might take eighty hours to do, if we, if the commission chooses to go the grant fund, that's to, to go through all the little hoops and getting a grant. So it's again, it's, it's a lot to do with, with understaffing positions. So that's what our goal is for the new year and then we can just really start spending down that fun. So, I went over this sort of before, sixty-four, sixty point four four percent are for the fire contract services. Twenty-three point one nine is for the projects and programs. Again, that was eighty-four percent budgeted expenditures for the direct implementation of protection and prevention from fires, disasters, and emergencies. So I think our theme going into twenty-two, twenty-three is the getting our funds active to provide services to residents and the community, capital expenditures, the building of the district parcel, remodeling El Monte Fire Station with environment improvements, increasing integrated hazardous reduction programs and services. And then another goal we would like to see is, I think Roger mentioned it two meetings ago, sort of a two-year projection of budgeting. And I don't know, Jay and Roger, if you, either of you have anything that you want to chime in there before I just quickly go over what changes were made from the, what was on.
We'll have more discussion at the end, I think.
Sounds good. Okay, so I color coded in blue, items that are shown in blue, that's what changed. The, so obviously the balance, balance sheet changed because the
Next slide, Corey.
Oh, I'm sorry, did it not?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm on the balance sheet? Are you seeing the balance sheet?
Yeah, we're seeing the balance sheet.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, talking about the balance sheet. Yeah, so obviously these numbers changed because other numbers changed, you know, the, the profit and loss flows to the balance sheet. So just go over that. Revenues, this is provided by the Office of Budget and Analysis of County. So we go by their numbers, they're the ones who make the projections. And I had mentioned in November that we wouldn't receive those till December. So now this is the figures they have provided us. And that is the revenue we have to work with. We just increased office expenses and workshop conferences and seminars just very slightly. It's due to extra employees and extra training opportunities for our employees. The property tax admin fee and the cost allocation fee, both of those figures were provided by county in December. So again, that's, that's not a decision that Jay and I just haphazardly made. That's something that county provides to us and that we follow there. And then, excuse me. Okay, so there was a little bit of change in salaries and payroll. And I don't know if Jay wants to speak more to this, but we have, we're rebranding our cert program general analyst to, she, she will be the emergency services manager. And then our current emergency services manager will be community education and risk reduction manager. So it's not adding any new people. It's a sort of a rebranding tool of, of what we currently have. And then as we discussed in November, there is, there will be, we retitled this as well. It was a programs manager when you saw it in November, but now it will be the programs and grants manager. And a couple of little numbers changed. I think operations manager went up slightly based on, on Dave annual compensation. And then the the tech, excuse me, emergency services manager went up slightly and that's due to full-time position that Victoria additional training she receives to, to fill that position. And then of course, the the payroll taxes go up when those numbers go up. So it's changes there. And I don't know, Jay, did you want to chime in anything on, on these salaries and payroll page? Or again, just should I go on and you can?
Yes, you can just go ahead.
Okay. And I don't think there's really any changes to the next couple of slides. I did put a note because just to clarify, you know, we did, we did have a big jump in the outside professional services. And for twenty twenty-three, we'll have another successor strategic plan. We'll have district parcel design, CW, CWPP fire fuel modeling, hopefully. Then of course, expansion of the current services, GIS development, our video videographer services with Jackson, the continuing website maintenance, design services for district brochures and materials that we're handing out, like the resiliency calendar. So that is why there's such a big increase there. And then, as I said earlier, I'm still waiting for the final numbers for the contract with Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection Service. So that would be the service contract and the battalion chief. And then finally, I just, I really, I, these notes are there, are pretty much the same as last time. No numbers changed from November for projects and programs. And then of course, our next steps. So it's like I said, we're looking for direction to make any county provided changes to revenues and expenditures after tonight's meeting. So we can submit to Oba by February eleventh. And then we will have a final draft budget at the February meeting, which you will approve. And if any changes, we will be resubmitting to Oba. County Executive reviews it February twenty-second to twenty-fifth. After that point in April, the Board of Commissioners will adopt the final budget. This is still just the draft we're working with. And then County Santa Clara has their recommended budget finalized April, budget workshops in May, and the budget hearings in June. And then the last two pages are just sort of your background mission statement and a chart of accounts which you've seen before. So that is what I have to say and I need to stop share screening. So yeah, that's the end of my report then for that. And I don't know, Jay and Roger, again, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, Jay, Roger, anything else to add?
No, I think that the, again, having been in this budget process all along, I think it's, I want to applaud Corey for doing a heck of a lot of work. It saved us all a meeting that we were able to look at earlier at the end of twenty twenty-two and not require a special meeting to dive further into it. My comments from before the previous meeting still apply, which is that as a commission, what this budget really points up is how much more we need to continue figuring out how can we expend our residents' resources locally and bring them to bear in service of fire prevention. You've seen what a huge expansion of programs and services our small crew of employees is bringing. But we've still got to do more. So we've got to find ways as a commission to continue increasing our scope and scale. So that's my thought.
Great. Thank you, Roger. Jay, anything to add to that?
I think just to say that I think this is a budget that I feel is aggressive. It's going to pick up for the next, we've got to get through this fiscal year, which goes through June, and then it will pick up in July. So we have to be able to project July of twenty-two through June of twenty-three. That's a whole series of months and we're trying to have the resources and the budget there with the support of staff, with retaining staff that we currently have, which are subject matter experts, anticipate the future, anticipate the fire needs of the district, have all that wrapped up in a way that then the commission will have those resources that are active for the community benefit. So I think that's my overall goal. I think if I were going to theme it, it's to get these revenues that are becoming just a bulk of unfunded accumulations or fund, net fund accumulations, get them into action. So that's, that's my hope. And that's why I think you're seeing some very aggressive plans from us. But right now, they're on paper. We've got to be able to implement them to do that. We need the staff, the programs, the consultants. So thank you. End of my comments.
Great, thank you, Jay. Yeah, I mean, you get, you, the staff, you and the staff are looking out eighteen months. You know, a year and a half from now is what you're budgeting for. And so, yeah, everyone's crystal balls, you know, how accurate. So it's aggressive, that's good. And I agree. So any further comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. So what we, I believe what we need to do here is we need to get, I need a a motion because we need a motion, because what we need is you know, to a motion for the general manager and the financial consultant to incorporate any revisions made by the County of Santa Clara, Office of Budget and Analysis Oba to revenue and expenditures after today, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, into the draft budget, submit the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three draft budget to Oba by February eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and return with a final FY twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three draft budget for consideration and approval at the commission meeting on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And then that's the regular commission meeting. So I need a motion to approve the power of the staff to do that in a second from a commissioner, please.
So moved, Tonka.
Thank you, Kavita.
Seconded, Spreen.
Thank you, Roger. All right. The item is now open for discussion. Any further discussion from commissioners? Any public comment? Yes, Alan.
Thank you. I have a few questions and a few comments. So I noticed there's some mention about a fire station remodel. I'm curious how much that is in in the budget, what the district's future facilities plans are. I've mentioned previously that I think the expenditure on the Palo Alto, managing the Palo Alto Station is 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 not justified that if it was simply manned on the high fire days, you'd get ninety-five percent of effectiveness with a fraction of the cost. The addition of another program manager position just shortly after hiring the first one and and increasing staffing to full-time for a number of position. I would have liked to see it again, chat that would identify what those additional tasks are and and the justification for that position. I'm curious what the assumption has been for the increase in in salaries for the fire department is starting in January twenty twenty-three. That's based upon the cost of living adjustment. And I guess Corey has mentioned she's waiting to receive that, but the calculation could be done from the cost, cost of living information that's available. Contingencies have been excessive in the past, and they seem to be excessive going into this budget. There's no discussion about the reserves. The reserves haven't changed. I don't know what your policies are with regards to reserves. One of the reserves is wildland fire detection cameras. I don't understand why that's a reserve. Either you're going to put it into the budget to do it, or, you know, I just don't see the purpose in reserving for it when you have thirty-five million dollars in cash. There's been substantial changes from the prior budget that was provided in November, and we just got this information late today, so I might have had more questions had there been more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, I took some notes here. Question on the remodel. Jay?
Yes, we're in the queue with Central Fire. They have three other stations ahead of El Monte before we can even get architect time. And so that's, we're in the queue, the stations that are ahead of us in the queue are in more dire need than is El Monte. So I really can't comment on that, other than just to talk about the process and that it's a wait on that.
Okay. So there was a comment on, a comment about station eight, you made comments regarding the positions. There was a cost for central fires, projection, Corey, you're just, you're waiting on their, their, their data for that?
That's correct. Yeah, it's a, it's a three-part annual increase. It is partially based on on COLA, but I also need to know some other items from.
All right. And then the decision to list the cameras as reserves as opposed to actually making it a line item because reserves are for unspecified contingencies?
So those items are in committed funds, and the district is not moving or making any, any changes in committed funds at this time.
Okay. So are the cameras in committed funds or the cam, are they in reserves?
Cameras were committed, the wrong term was used. It is called committed funds. Cameras were put in committed funds, I believe, three or four years ago. And we have, but we have no plans to change commitments at this time.
Okay, I think I caught it all. All right, thank you, Alan. Any further public comments? Okay. With that, we'll now move to a vote by the commission. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
Right, it's President Warren.
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn.
Approved.
Commissioner Kearney.
Approved.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, thank you very much. Well, we will now move to item fifteen, which is the commission member reports. This is the future agenda items. This is the opportunity for commissioners to provide reports or request any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from commissioners on commission member reports? All right. Not seeing any. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, not seeing any. We'll now move to item sixteen, which is the calendar year twenty twenty-two election of officers. Item sixteen A is the election of the commission president. All right, so the sixteen A, which is election of the commission president. After three years of sitting in this chair, I have decided that I would like to hand it over to someone else, and I have talked to Roger, and he's amenable to accept the position if he is approved. So I would like to nominate Roger to become the president of the Fire Commission for twenty twenty-two. So I'd like to know if there are any other nominations for president for next year, besides Roger, we discussed.
I think it will second year nomination.
Thank you. Roger, will you acknowledge that?
I think it's, it's more like a hot potato being thrown into my hands than anything else, but I think it's process of elimination comes to me, and so I'm happy to continue serving and and I have big shoes to fill.
Well, thank you. They are eleven and a halves. I mean, they are big shoes that I've got. All right, I don't see any other nominations. So so Commissioner Spreen is nominated to be commission president. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
All right, President Warren.
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn.
Approved.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Enthusiastic, yes.
And Chris, can I just clarify, it's okay for Roger to vote for himself?
Yes.
It is, thank you, wonderful. Okay, so Commissioner of course, Commissioner Spreen will serve as the commission president at the conclusion of this meeting for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Roger, for agreeing to take that on. Chris, a point of clarification from tonight's meeting, should I sign the adopted resolutions, or does that now fall to Roger at the conclusion of this meeting?
I would say, you know, practically speaking, we voted Roger in at the end of the meeting, and you were chairing the other meeting, so I think you would sign for everything.
All right, I'll do that. All right, Roger, thank you very much for taking that. Congratulations. We'll now move to item sixteen B, which is the election of the commission vice president. All right, Melvin, after our discussions, I think I, you've served as vice president for five years?
Yes.
And you are ready to move on from being vice president, correct?
That would be fair to say.
Okay, fair enough. And I reached out and I talked to Commissioner Sherlock, who is not here, but I did have a conversation with her today. And she said that she would be willing if you I, she would, if I nominated her, then if we elect her to be vice president, she will willingly and happily serve as the commission vice president.
Great.
So I would like to nominate Commissioner Sherlock as the vice president.
And I can second that.
Thank you, Kavita. All right, is there any discussion from the commissioners? Any public comment? All right, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
All right, and for the last time, I will call you out as President Warren.
Approved.
Last time as Vice President Vaughn.
Approved.
Okay, Commissioner Kearney.
Yep.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so Commissioner Sherlock is going to serve as commission vice president at the conclusion of this meeting for the calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Great, congratulations, Commissioner Sherlock. That will wrap up item seventeen. I'd like to thank everyone. I mean, I've sat in this chair for three years. It's been a momentous three years. The amount that we've gotten done, the things that we've worked through, the growth in the staff, the projects, the professionalism has been outstanding. And so it's been quite a ride. Thank you, everyone. Melvin, you want to say anything before, last chance as a vice president?
I concur. It's been a very joyful ride for the last five years. And it's a, it's a good opportunity, time to to move on, and I appreciate it. And as Mark said, it's been a a very professional organization, one of the most professional organizations I've ever sat on. So I appreciate everybody here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing before you adjourn, Mark, which is that, one of the tragedies of COVID and these kind of meetings is that we really should be having a bigger celebration in person of what you've accomplished to point that out, because if you look at this organization from three years ago to now, it's, it's the change is so dramatic, and what you had to go through with the audit and everything else deserves recognition. And I'm sorry, just to give you a little verbal shout out here, but it deserves more, and we all appreciate it. I certainly do.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate everyone in the staff that made this happen. It was, I was just, I was just at the helm. There was it was a team effort, trust me. Thank you, but thank you for the kind words, Roger, very much. All right, and thank you, everyone. If there's no other comments, I'd like to move to item seventeen, which is adjournment. All right, this adjourns, this concludes the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-five PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on February fifteenth, so don't forget Valentine's Day the day before that. February fifteenth, June twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Sir General Analyst BB, please stop the recording.